Y'all in the back, we're starting. Sorry. Okay. Try that again. This is the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting for Wednesday, February the 9th. It is after 3:30 PM. And the meeting is hereby called to order. We have, on our agenda, we have two zoning items. However, the first case, which is ZAC 2021-00019, is going to be delayed to a later meeting. So the only case that we will be considering today is B, which is on page four. And it is KCAC 2021-00023 in Bush Hills. So who's going to read the case?
I'll be happy to read it, Councilor Abbott. Kim Spurrel, Planning, Engineering, and Permits. This is case ZAC 2021-23. It's in the Bush Hills Neighborhood Association. It is an application to change zone district boundaries from D3, single-family, to C2, general commercial, in order to convert the Woodrow Wilson School property into community event space, community garden, and an outdoor urban farm. The subject property is a little over five acres. That's currently zoned D3. And the site contains the former Woodrow Wilson Elementary School that closed in 2010. Properties to the north, south, east, and west are all single-family residential, zoned D3. The applicant is proposing to continue using the site as a community garden and urban farm. They're also proposing to renovate portions of the school to serve as community event space. The applicant, Bush Hills Connections, is a nonprofit that works alongside the Bush Hills Neighborhood Association to advance growth and vitality in the neighborhood. They began the community garden at that site in 2018, and they have continued to expand their operations. They're proposing to repurpose the cafeteria and gymnasium located at the school. That would include after-school enrichment programs, neighborhood meetings, social and fundraising activities, career development programs, health and wellness classes, youth activities, community education programs, rental space for other community organizations for meetings and activities, and then community meeting space to plan for other built environment improvements in the area. The city's long-range land use plan identifies the property as residential low. So the rezoning request is not consistent with the long-range land use plan. However, the southwest area framework plan, which is the area where this site is located, does recommend redevelopment for this site. The plan specifically mentions potential uses that would include senior living, job training, or mixed-use development. All of the proposed uses for this site are allowed in the C2 district. A few of the uses would require a special exception to be approved by the zoning board of adjustment. The applicant attended the Bush Neighborhood, Bush Hills Neighborhood Association on October 26th, and the neighborhood voted unanimously to support their request. The vote was 31 to 0 to recommend approval. The property, as I mentioned, is in the southwest framework plan area, and they deferred to the Neighborhood Association on voting for this request. The staff, although the rezoning request is not consistent with the long-range land use plan, staff does recommend approval because of what we just discussed in the framework plan. It does mention repurposing the site. We do recommend some Q conditions. We recommend only the following C2 uses be allowed. And I don't, you guys can read them if you want to, but we picked out just the uses that would apply to this property for the uses proposed and include any residential uses since it is currently zoned residential. The zoning advisory committee met on January 18th, and they voted to approve this request along with the Q conditions that were recommended by staff. And that concludes our staff report.
Thank you. Is a representative of the applicant here? Would you like to come up and introduce yourselves and tell us something exciting?
Yeah, plenty of exciting things happening on Bush Hills. But first, let me say good evening and thank you all so much for the opportunity to come before you. I'm Jonice Thompson, and I live on Bush Hills and have probably now almost 35, 40 years, raised three sons there that attended the public school system. And I love Bush Hills. And I strongly believe that in order to have healthy neighborhoods, it starts within the neighborhood. So what we did on Bush Hills in 2018, we decided that in order for us to start building a healthy Bush Hills, we needed to come up with a way that we could, because it unapologetically take resources to make sure that you can get the things that you need to get done to have a healthy neighborhood. And the first thing we understood was that you could not create another entity inside of a neighborhood unless you had the endorsement of the neighborhood residents themselves. So my neighborhood president, President Wallace Dean Streeter, and the neighborhood is joined at the hips with now a 501(c)(3) that we established in 2018. And we looked around the neighborhood, because we have Birmingham Southern is probably one of the largest institutions that's in the neighborhood. But when you look around and you want to go to the nearest grocery store to get fresh fruits and vegetables, you are like miles away. And if I leave UAB, and when I was working there, and if I wanted to stop and pick up some greens, or corn, or oranges, or apples, once I left UAB, clearly at home, that was not a store I could stop at before I got to 1613 Eighth Avenue West. And I was coming down a main road, Third Avenue West. So we decided that, hey, we got all of these people like me that's growing older in the neighborhood, and we all need fresh fruits and vegetables. Our children need to learn how to eat fresh fruit and vegetables, how to cook them, too. So we decided we established this in 2018, and you all, it is so exciting. We started, we had a community garden, and we got a grant from the City of Birmingham. I think April Williams, it was like $1,500. And we said, we're going to create a community garden. And so once we got the lease from the Birmingham City School on the grounds, we decided, okay, we can put these boxes out here for community members to come in, but we need more fresh fruits and vegetables. So we decided to take that whole land and turn it into what we call a community garden at first, but then we just named it an urban farm. And what we're not realizing, we went to USDA, got all this stuff we needed. We have partnerships that we needed. And we actually produced, I've never seen anything like it. I'm not, I've never been a gardener, but I've learned to do gardening now. But we produced over the first year, I think it was like 30,000 pounds or more, 50, was it 50?
Can, if y'all are going to speak, can you come up to this?
Yeah, come on, come on.
Yeah, I want, we want to be able to hear you.
Yeah, and I want, yeah, I want you out because it's so important to us because it started in the neighborhood. And this is April Williams.
Well, you have to talk into it real close.
Hello, everybody. My name is April Marius Williams, and I live at 1203 Bush Circle. I guess I am the voluntold leader of the garden and urban farm. We have, as Ms. Thompson said, a 501(c)(3), and we have three primary focus, and that's education, community renewal, revitalization, and health and wellness. And health and wellness, the urban farm and community garden falls upon the health and wellness, and I chair that committee. And so producing that much food, and we are able to, we know our seniors, so we are able to take them, okra, greens, squash, I've never seen that much squash grow overnight in my life. But we are able to hand-deliver it to them. And so, and then we were fortunate enough to go back and get a 50-year lease on the school. Because right now, our children do not, our children, like, we don't, we meet at the schools, at the school for even for our neighborhood meetings now. But it would give us an opportunity to be able to not only just grow those vegetables, but we'll be able to bring, because as many of you all know, our millennials and younger people, they don't know how to cook collard greens. So we've got to show them how to cook it and make it fun for them. Also, the garden has served as an area that since the pandemic, because all of us stuck in our homes and we need to get out, so it's been a gathering spot for people like me. I never thought I would want to put on overalls and go out to a garden, but for my mental health and mental well-being and physical activity, and we even put raised beds out there so that those people that was handicapped, they would not have to, you know, they could come and enjoy it, too. Even a young girl who had, go to Parker High School and has found difficulty, and she could not, and she wanted to do something, she was already depressed, and here's the pandemic. So she's got a bed out there with daisies in it that reminds her of her past parents and grandparents and things. So she was, they are able to come out and actually work in that garden. So it's not, it's designed for all the residents of Bush Hills. And we have been able to do this since 2018. We've got probably 25 or 30 partnerships that we do. But the thing is, before we go ask, because the city can't take care of everything. So we figured we needed to come up with a plan ourselves and then invite partners in like UAB, Grand Challenge, who brought in a corporate sponsor, because that building was, April told them when they came out that, hey, what about this building here, the school? That's like the big elephant sitting out here in the middle of the farm. And so we wouldn't touch it because we can't eat the elephant, okay? But we wanted it, so we got support in touching that building, and we will have a kitchen in there. Partner, and maybe Teresa want to come up here and talk about that. So you all would know, and both what we're doing, you all, there's 99 neighborhoods that can do the same thing. So we're not just, so we're all, that any neighborhood can come in and say, hey, show us what you did. And it will be bonded on paper that you started like this so that you know the roadmap, you know, where the stop signs, where the yield signs. So we're not just doing it for Bush Hills, we're doing it for any neighborhood that we're involved and need to know how to prioritize. Your, because it starts with us. Everybody can come in and say, you need to do this, that. But if it's not bought into by the people who live, work, and play there, then you're just dumping money like into a bucket with an empty hole, with no bottom in it, okay? We put hard work, we are bored, we're not paid, we volunteer, we work all the time. I opened the garden up this morning at 8 o'clock for Jones Valley Apprentices. So, but it's fun, it's good, it's a good, and that's what we should do in our neighborhood. And then we invite people in to help us build what we want to try to build here. So we're delighted to be here and present important things about the garden and welcome you, that if you want to come out for a site visit, look at our garden, you are welcome to do that. But we are working for a good neighborhood, helping Bush Hills also have acquired the corner of the Archidev, the right cross from, of the parts where the old hunk is, because it's becoming blighted, people out there just trying to, I understand, trying to sell things with all the trash and all of that. So we will have like a farm stand there. We can take those vegetables, and we don't throw it on. Oh, we give them to people. Not the last, um, that we took out this morning one day. Kayla, Kayla, this morning. So, so we are happy to be here and want to continue the work that we don't mind doing, but we are also raising up that next generation to take our place. It's unapologetic.
Well, good. Thank you for that very nice explanation with illustrations so that we can imagine what it's like, because I haven't seen it yet, but I certainly know where that vacant lot across where the Hong Kong restaurant used to be, so that, anything you do is an improvement there. Do any members of the committee have questions or comments? Councilor Wood?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate seeing you guys again. Really, really impressive what you all have done out there already. You know, we built a community garden in District 1, and we were looking at kind of what you guys had done and built, and so excited to see you kind of look and try to expand and so, kind of seeing what's happened with the Jones Valley Teaching Farm and just the amount of traffic they've been able to get there and the interest and really learning. And so I actually planted something for the first time last year and watched it grow. And so I think I've got the green thumb, so they will try it again next year. But to hear 50,000 pounds and 30,000 pounds, I think is, you know, really impressive. So we're excited to kind of hear the, really, the ownership that y'all are really taking in the area and making it what you want it to be, and so continue on.
Yeah, we heard that y'all were going to cook up a big pot of collard greens and bring it up to the council. We heard a rumor about that.
Get around and plant the spring garden up.
Councilor Tate?
Oh, my goodness. Ms. Williams, Mrs. Williams, it's so good to see you. I'm so excited for what you all are doing. I had the opportunity to actually see some video footage and saw you guys had a chef out there. And I was like, ooh, if I get on Finley Avenue and hit Archidev, and I'm right there by the farm, but it's amazing. And then the collective building and pouring back and centering in the voices of the community, that's so, so, so important. And I definitely try to always push that, like, when I go out to my neighborhood, means how you all are so powerful and resilient that you got the power to change your community and reimagine what it needs to look like. And then you guys have, you know, you got the blueprint for other communities to not even think about this. This is already out there, it's working. Take it, make it fit for your community. And I'm excited because it reminds me of my grandparents' home, and right across the street, my grandfather has maybe like an acre of land, and we used to call it the field. And so when he was living, he would till that field up, and you would see all kinds of stuff, corn, I mean, everything. So I love what you all are doing out there. I'm excited for y'all. And, you know, any type of way that, you know, the city of Birmingham can be supportive, I'm pretty sure that my other colleagues would definitely keep supporting, but I'm excited. And I want to come get them blueprints so we can take them to District 9 and encourage them, hey, go over there in Bush Hills and get your lesson, your farming lesson, and then come back and bring it back to your community. But you ladies, this is beautiful. Thank you all.
Want to create a blueprint to help other neighborhoods, because not every neighborhood has the leadership that can come up with a project and see it to fruition and let it mellow with age and then share it with other people. And the fact that you have that capability is wonderful, because there are people who don't even know where to start, or maybe they don't have a vacant school property in their neighborhood, you know, and they need ideas. So I think this is great. And the only question, you know, I'm very defensive of single-family residential neighborhoods. And so when I saw C2 zoning, I was kind of unhappy. But then I looked at the list of uses that are going to be allowed, and that made me feel better. The only question I had is, item GG on the list is a cellular tower. Do we really want to put any more cell towers in our neighborhoods?
There was one already on that property, on the boulevard, you know, they have.
Yeah, I know they have their towers, but I mean, we're not going to let somebody add a whole bunch of towers over there.
I think when we made that, it was in consideration of what was there, because we didn't necessarily want to make it legal, nonconforming.
Okay.
But if that's something that you guys would like to remove from the.
Well, I just wouldn't like to see anymore, like, you know, somebody says, hey, we can make a lot of money by having a cell tower farm.
We can attest, we don't have any interest in having additional, actually, we'd like that one removed, but that belongs to Birmingham City School. We do have a 50-year lease, but that's still.
Yeah, you can't tear their tower down. Well, that was my only question, because I've been around long enough to remember when putting cell towers in people's neighborhoods made them really angry, and, you know, they didn't want them. And so, and so I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, leaving the door open for any to be added there.
And I would add, Councilor Abbott, with the setback requirements adjacent to residential, it might not even be possible for a cell tower to go back without, you know, a regulatory action, because we do have strict requirements for how close they can be to adjacent properties that are residential. So that is an added layer of protection should any new ones want to locate there.
Okay. Well, like I said, I have an affinity for our neighborhoods, and I don't want people to move to another suburb to get away from what we allow to happen in our city. You know, we want our city to be the place, we want people to come in from the suburbs and move here because we have these fabulous things instead of chasing them away. So if there are no other questions, we could have a motion.
Move approval.
Okay, it has been moved and approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we voted in favor of you, and now you just have to go to the city council, and you won't have as much time to tell us your story, but.
But visit our website. We're fortunate enough to have a website, custom contact.
Okay.
BushHills.org.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you all so much.
Do y'all have any men in your group?
Yes, we do.
Good, good. Okay, we are, I've buried my agenda. We have taken care of our one zoning case since the other one was delayed. And we also, I believe that Dr. Lee sent everyone all those resumes. We have four people who have done a good job on the planning commission that, my opinion is, that they should be reappointed. And then we have the resumes of four highly qualified people. It's amazing that we are actually, we have applicants who have a background for these positions. And so my recommendation would be that we approve those four whose resumes were sent last night so that we can get the planning commission, we've got the ZBA back in business again, we can get the planning commission fully operational. So that's my suggestion, but I want to hear from the committee members and see what y'all think.
I had an opportunity to look at the resumes, and I was very impressed with the knowledge and skills that a lot of people are bringing, you know, and wanting to serve on these boards. So that impressed me a lot, that it's people that really know, you know, zoning and planning, you know, what that's all about. So I'm excited and agree with you as well.
Councilor Woods, any thoughts?
Yeah, like I said, I've checked them out as well. I think each person is definitely bringing a strong resume to the table, skill set. So I think the ZBA planning commission should be in good hands.
Okay, Mr. Ward, do you want to say something to us or tell us the names of the people or tell us your opinion? I'm sure you, I'm sure you have one. Come up and talk to our puny little microphone that doesn't even reach you.
Let's see, can you hear me okay? Okay. Well, I'm Michael Ward. I serve as principal planner in the city's Planning, Engineering, and Permits Department. And I just want to say I definitely appreciate this committee's support, you know, of the, not only the candidates that's up for reappointment, but also, you know, the candidates that are up for appointment. So, as you mentioned, we do have four candidates that are up for reappointment. We also have another four candidates that are up for appointment. And I also just want to mention that we also have two ex officio seats on the commission as well, and that need to be occupied by two city councilors. And so, Councilor Abbott, you're already on the planning commission, so it's just really a matter of formally reappointing you to the planning commission. But we also need another counselor to occupy the other ex officio seat on the planning commission as well.
Okay, so let's take care of the ex officios first. So I have heard a rumor that Councilor Tate is willing to be that person because she is dying to learn all about planning and zoning in the city of Birmingham. And I heard also that Councilor Woods was in agreement with that choice.
Selfless.
So, yes, you're very selfless. So could we have a motion? And I'm willing to continue to serve. I think I've been on the planning commission ever since I arrived at City Hall, so.
I move to appoint Councilors Abbott and Tate as ex officio members to the planning commission.
Okay, so that motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we've got that taken care of. Now, we have four members who are up to be reappointed, who have done a good job and who have continuously been in attendance, which has sometimes been a problem in the distant past. So, Mr. Ward, would you read their names?
Let's see, the names of the candidates that are eligible for reappointment are Brian Gunn, and if selected, he will be reappointed for a term that will expire on October the 6th of 2026. The next candidate is Mashonda Taylor. If she's chosen to be reappointed, she will be reappointed to a term that will expire on October the 6th, 2026. Third candidate is Patty Pilkerton. If she's chosen to be reappointed, she will be appointed to a term that will expire on October the 6th, 2026. And the last candidate for reappointment is Michael Morrison. If he's chosen to be reappointed, he will be reappointed to a term that will expire on October the 6th, 2027.
Okay, do we have a motion regarding those reappointments?
So moved.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we reappoint those applicants or those sitting members. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So those passed. So now we are to the new members who have applied to be on the Birmingham Planning Commission. So will you read those names, please?
The names of the candidates that are eligible for appointment to the Birmingham Planning Commission, the first name is Brian King. Let's see, the second name is J. Charles Jordan II. The third name is Stephen Schrader. And the fourth name is Sharon Nelson.
Okay, do we have any discussion of those individuals, or would a member of the committee like to make a motion?
A move, we appoint these four individuals to the planning commission.
It has been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that item passes. And is there anything else we need to do? And is there anything else we need to do?
No, that's it.
Okay, one question. How many supernumeraries that we have for the ZBA? Don't we have some, that may not be the right term, but don't we have?
It is. We still have one empty spot for supernumerary. I talked to Dr. Lee. At the last meeting, we discussed trying to find a previous ZBA member that might be willing to be the supernumerary that might have some institutional knowledge of the process.
Well, and also, we were looking for someone with some expertise in historic preservation.
Right.
Because historic preservation seems to have sort of fallen off the radar screen at the city of Birmingham, and I think we need to get it back in, on people's minds because we have lots of neighborhoods that are eligible for preservation, but we don't seem to have much impetus for doing that. So we're looking.
And we, and like you mentioned, so we have, we currently still have an open spot on the board for someone who is in construction.
Construction, yeah.
And there's still an at-large spot that could be filled by someone who could be, you know, affiliated with design review or historian. And then we have that vacant supernumerary spot. We have reached out to a couple of our previous members that were excellent members, and unfortunately, none of them are agreeable to be a supernumerary right now, so we're still trying to work with Dr. Lee to find someone for that spot. But just to update you guys, we did have an orientation for our three new members that you guys recommended our last meeting. And they're going to be, I feel like they're going to be fantastic and they will actually start and have their first meeting tomorrow. So we're very excited. It's the first time we will be able to have a meeting since November. So thank you for that, and we're still looking for those three spots for ZBA.
Okay. And another thing, and, you know, I'm sure we can discuss this offline, but it also seems important to me to make sure that the people on the ZBA understand that when people come before them, they're asking to actually not do what our zoning ordinance says they need to do. So they really need to have rock-solid reasons for doing what they want to do rather than just, hi, I want to do something that's a violation of the ordinance.
Yes, ma'am. We, we went over at length the variance standards that must be met in order for a variance to actually be approved. We wanted to make sure they understood that it was not a financial hardship, that it needed to be something, you know, I'm not going to go over all the standards with you guys, but it needs to be, you know, maybe a topography issue, a characteristic of the shape of the lot, that it does not need to be self-imposed or financial, like I just mentioned. And so, they paid close attention and hopefully, you know, we'll have a good group that understands it's okay to say no moving forward if they don't meet the standards.
And then possibly someone in the administration could have a discussion with the people at the desk, who I have heard sometimes suggest to people that, hey, you can ask for a variance. Maybe we don't need to suggest that to people. I mean, I'm just saying, I know we, we get a fee every time somebody applies for a variance, but I don't think we need to suggest it, you know.
Yeah, we don't typically advertise variances as, you know, an open kind of, I mean, obviously it is a tool that's available for developers and property owners, but our goal is to try and assist them in complying with as much of the ordinance as possible.
Yeah, and I think that's wonderful. That is absolutely wonderful, because I have seen, you know, agendas of the ZBA that have had 20 cases, you know, just, we just don't need to encourage it, we can help people if they inquire.
And you will see, the next two agendas will have 13 or 14 cases each, but that's not due to the number of new requests. That is cleaning up the past two and a half months. So if you guys actually take a look at it, I don't want you to think that's what's going on. We're still playing a little catch-up with our new members.
That's good, that's good. Well, does anyone else have anything to add regarding planning and zoning? Do you want to introduce Jess to everyone?
Oh, sure. I'd like to introduce you guys to Jess Blankenship-Maze. She's a new planner. She's actually going to be working on the ZAC cases, which are the rezoning requests that you guys will see at your P&amp;Z meetings. So just want to introduce you to her. You'll see her face moving forward as part of our staff and our PEP zoning team.
Well, we'll see her face when we get these masks off.
Well, yes, that's correct. Right now, you see from the nose up.
I just like that, we'll see her face in our dreams. So if there is nothing else, does someone like, would someone like to make a motion that we adjourn?
A move adjournment?
It has been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you, staff.